So how you, how you like it?
Well. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to make it.
Good. Is it comfortable?
Yeah. Yeah, that'd have more surgery than more.
He really. Only problem.
Yeah, it's part of it.
We'll, we'll give you our sick days.
You just keep eating there.
Yeah. Afraid I run out of sick days.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, we'll give you ours if you stay.
Well, that's my white eye.
I'm sure Ellen don't mind.
No, Ellen don't mind. You're gonna have to get her to come in and get her a trip.
You don't think so? You don't think so?
Yeah. Thank you. That's, that's, that's a white man for you right there.
Get a small one. They say about once a month, but they're just trying to sell you.
What time you got, Eddie?
It's time, Eric.
That's what I'm thinking. All right, I call this meeting to order at this time. We'll have our Lord's Prayer plus the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's all stand. Lord's Prayer, all together. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, as we give those to our best gifts. And we do not take a day that we are not given. As the King of power and glory forever. All together.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Hughes?
Here.
Commissioner Moser?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Jinks?
Here.
Commissioner Stutz?
Yeah.
Approval of minutes from the regular monthly meeting July first, twenty twenty-four, and the workshop and the call meeting of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
I move adoption of the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion made second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Posed likewise, motion does carry. Approval of distributions for the month of June. Move to adopt. To approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself, Hannah. I'm reading. I'm sorry.
Just hold on to that though.
Just give me just a second.
Okay, page one, general fund. Uh, three thousand dollars to Blue Ridge Medical Transport LLC. That was for cardiac monitors for Sweetwater Fire Department. Further down that page, Cigna Health Insurance, the employee and the employer portions, fifty-seven thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety cents. Page two, John Dutton is who certifies our lifeguards. Those were final payments made out, um, one thousand twenty-five dollars to certify the lifeguards for the public pool. Kel Belt, thirty-five hundred dollars. That was a survey that was completed on downtown Circle Park, uh, under the Main Street Grant. Um, Monroe County Assessor of Property, eight thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars. That was, um, our portion of the assessment charge that they charge us every year. That is budgeted, um, but that is now gonna be an annual reoccurring cost. Um, Sweetwater Fire Department had turnout gear that was purchased, um, and reimbursed through a private donation. And you'll see that charged to NAFCO Incorporated, fifty-one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Further down that-
Do you, could I, uh, go back to that property assessor thing?
Yeah.
All right, why do we get char- there, I assume that's for city properties?
It is, and there apparently is a state statute, and I can forward that to you, what the assessor sent to me. Um, they feel like each city should cover a proportionate amount of what it costs to assess the properties inside the city limits.
Which they're assessing for themselves to begin with.
That is true. It is the same assessment that ends up on the city tax roll. And it is not more work for them. It is the same assessment for the city and the county, but yes, they expect that each city pays a portion of that to the county.
Will you send that to me?
I will.
Thank you.
How much was that?
Um, this year it was eight thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars. Um, let's see. I can't remember if I said stormwater payment to Sweetwater Utility Board, nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars. Further down that page, two thousand, seven dollars and fifty-nine cents to Dico Company. These are chemicals for the pool and the splash pad. The last entry on page two is thirty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and twelve cents. It's the retirement payable to TCRS, and that was for the month of May. That's the employee and the employer portions. Page three, uh, fuel purchases for May, eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-four cents. A three thousand dollar payment to Main Street Studio Architects is, um, for the work on the community center. Uh, nine-one-one appropriation to Monroe County Emergency Communications, twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Page four in the general fund, five thousand dollars was paid to Westview Cemetery of Sweetwater. Um, we were able to make that payment at the end of June because we did get, um, confirmation that they have received their nonprofit status. So we were waiting on that before we gave them their annual budget appropriation, and they did provide proof of that nonprofit status from the IRS. And that was a budget appropriation. Um, fuel, again, this month for June, ten thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-one cents. That does include the schools also, which they reimburse for their portion of the fuel. Page five of the general fund, one thousand, thirty dollars. I just wanted to point that out, and further down, fifteen thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars. Both of those are journal entries, so they weren't cash disbursements. But basically, what I did was anything that has not been awarded but is a drug seizure, in the past, we've been keeping that in the general fund and then transferring it to the drug fund when a judge awarded that to us. It, it just makes for extra entries, having to do that every single time we get an award, even if it's a two hundred dollar award, we're having to do an entry. So what I've done is I've taken the collective balance that is sitting in warrants payable in the general fund and moved all of that to the drug fund. It's still sitting in a warrants payable line, so it's still showing as a liability on the general ledger. But as those are awarded, we'll only have to make one entry out of drug fund to put them to revenue instead of being held. And again, it's not actually revenue to us until it's awarded by the court. So that's sitting separately. We can always look and see exactly what we think is owed to us. And, and once we get that, uh, seizure award paperwork through the courts, we move it to a revenue line item. Uh, page six, general fund, five thousand dollars to Daniel Bootay. Again, this is on the site plan for downtown at Circle Park. That's actually the beginning of the landscape design and the site plan for down there. Towards, that's paid for by the Main Street Grant. Towards the bottom of that page, Rogers Group, we did paving in, uh, end of June, beginning of July, so a portion of that came out of last year's budget, so fifty thousand dollars of that to Rogers Group came out of general fund. And then towards the bottom of that page, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars, Sweetwater Utility Board. A part of that was the stormwater payment for June, and part of that was their COVID project. It was combined all in the same check, but the money that we owed them the balance of for their COVID project, which is a water tank rehabilitation, we paid that out of there, and I think that was two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars of that was the COVID project. Page seven, um, you'll see we made a payment to Tellico Plains Police Department. That's unusual, so I wanted to explain what that was. Forty-eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars and sixty-nine cents. We had to choose a collaborative partner on the police grant. Our collaborative partner was Tellico Plains. Tellico Plains turned in the payroll from the person they had hired under that grant. We reimbursed them for the payroll they paid out, and then the state reimburses us. So one hundred percent of that will be reimbursed, but that was the way that we had to do it under the contract with the state. Um, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-four cents, garbage fee to Waste Connections of Tennessee. Um, Sonya? Remind me, was that supposed to come out of general fund or should it come out of sanitation? We need to check on that. That maybe should have come out of sanitation. So we're gonna check on that. Um, Sweetwater Police Department purchased vehicles and the Street Department purchased a truck. Both of those payments are on there to Jackie Jones Ford, ninety-five thousand, four hundred and two dollars and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Also, we made a payment to Spectrum Electric, sixty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. That is on the railroad grant, which is reimbursed. A port, there's actually three grants that are tied together. Um, two of them are reimbursed a hundred percent, and one of them is reimbursed at ninety percent. So almost all of that money will be getting back. That's it for general fund. It's a lot, because it's the last month of the year. Um, State Street Aid, Fund One Twenty-One, paving to the Rogers Group. This is the portion that came out of State Street Aid, forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents. Drug fund, uh, I just wanted to point out the offsetting entry where we moved those transfers on seizures to the drug fund. That fifteen thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars was a transfer from general fund. Tourism Fund, One Twenty-Three, eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars paid to DMA Events. That's the mural project. Um, that was the north Main Street mural with the honeybees. And then thirty-five thousand dollars, um, is where we transferred money from the tourism back to the general fund to pay, help pay for the cost of high mass lights. That's what that thirty-five thousand is, and that's in the budget each year. The library report is in there, and Tanya's here, if anybody has any questions on it. Uh, nothing significant in the LEA account, and solid waste collection. I just wanted to point out ABC Fence of Knoxville is who we purchased the gates from to stop the excessive trash being dumped at the garage and at the dump. Twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars was for both of those locations, and we did take that out of the sanitation fund, um, and not out of general fund. And then also our contract payment to Waste Connections, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and eight cents. Nothing significant in ECD or the COVID fund that we haven't already discussed. Any questions on any of that?
The, the sanitation one that's in general fund, would that be for the previous month?
It could be, um, that's two, it's not, it's definitely not a double payment, but usually in the month of June, we're paying May and June bills. So we'll have to double check and make sure. That's very likely should have come out of sanitation fund.
You just reflect that on the next. Is, is our sanitation getting higher at, at twenty-five? I mean, it keeps going up.
We get an adjustment from WCI every April, so this year it was, the maximum they can increase it is four percent. Um, but it's based on the fuel index, so, um, this year I think it was around two, a little under two percent. But yeah, it adjusts every April. That contract actually comes up in twenty twenty-five, so we'll have to choose whether we decide to try and link in with the county's contract again, if we wanna try and bid it on our own. Typically, pricing is not as good if you bid it on your own, and the county's contract actually goes another five or ten years, I think. So we'll have to talk a little more in depth about sanitation.
We may have to go up on it, too.
Well, I do think we haven't raised the garbage fee in, I don't know, six or seven years. At some point, we're gonna, we're not gonna be able to keep eating that, and part of the reason is the state requires that we keep a minimum fund balance in sanitation, because its own separate fund is considered an enterprise fund, which means, it's kinda like utilities, we're charging a fee for it. It's a fee-based service, the garbage is. At some point, we can't keep dipping into sanitation and eating that cost. We will have to raise the rate on it, which right now it's, I think, eleven dollars, um, per household, so it does, it no longer includes things like picking up debris on the side of the road or pick, picking up brush. It doesn't really cover any of that. All of that comes, still comes out of general fund. So when we do decide to increase the rate, I think it needs to truly reflect what the cost of sanitation is, not just what the household garbage pickup is. But that's probably something we'll be looking at in the next year.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the distributions we've just heard?
I'll move to approve. I'll move to approve.
Timing was a little better that time. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed likewise, motion does carry. No one has registered to make a public comment? We will now have a public hearing on several items. First, ordinance number ten thirty-eight to close an alley off McCaslin Avenue. Is anyone here present to make a comment on the closing of this alley? Ordinance number ten thirty-nine to rezone partial point, uh, one point zero zero of Monroe County Tax Map Zero One Five E, Group D, to be rezoned from R two to R one. Is anyone here present to make a comment on this? Ordinance number ten forty to amend the budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is anyone here to make a comment? Ordinance number ten forty-one to rezone partial fifty-six point oh nine of Monroe County Tax Map Zero Two Three from C three to M one. Is anyone here to make a comment? Ordinance number ten forty-two to amend Title One General Administration to establish a city administrator. Is anyone present to make a comment? Chuck, is that why you're here? In old business, we have, we will take action on these ordinances. First, is there a motion on ordinance ten thirty-eight to close an alley off McCaslin Avenue on second and final reading?
So move.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Moser?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jinks?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Motion does carry. Is there a motion on ordinance number ten thirty-nine to rezone partial one point zero zero of Monroe County Tax Map Zero One Five E, Group D, to be rezoned from R two to R one on second and final reading?
I make a motion for approval of ordinance ten thirty-nine as submitted.
I'll second that.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Moser?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jinks?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Motion does carry. Is there a motion on ordinance number ten forty to amend the budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four on second and final reading?
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
Can I make a point? Um, I think if that payment to WCI needs to come out of sanitation, that we'll have to amend the sanitation budget to keep it from going over. Um, so if I could get you all to amend that ordinance to allow for the extra... I'll find it here in a second. If you would do twenty-six thousand in the sanitation fund. And it's not really increasing what we spent. We, we paid for it. It's just I'm not sure if we paid for it out of general fund or out of sanitation fund. So if we could amend that ordinance to increase the sanitation fund amendment by twenty-six thousand, that would be enough that we wouldn't have to hold off on closing for another reading.
Okay, is there amendment to the motion?
I'll move to amend the motion by adding the twenty-six thousand.
Second.
Second. Any more?
Okay, so if, if it wasn't done wrong and it is right, it, the twenty-six thousand just won't be put into the amendment?
Yeah. We'll probably still post it as an amendment to the budget, but it won't, we won't have spent it. Um, if, I really do think it was supposed to be in sanitation. I don't think we've already corrected that, um, so it needs to be corrected.
Okay. Got a motion in a second? To amend. To amend, yes. To amend.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Moser?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jinks?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we all vote on the original motion. Motion?
Yeah, I move to accept the amendments.
Shouldn't have to, um, like, amendment to the budget.
Yes, amendment to the budget.
Second? Motion second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Moser?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jinks?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Okay, motion carries.
Is there a motion on ordinance number ten forty-one to rezon partial fifty-six point oh nine of Monroe County Tax Map Zero Two Three from C three to M one on second and final reading?
Make a motion for approval of ordinance ten forty-one as submitted.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Moser?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jinks?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Carries. Is there a motion on ordinance number ten forty-two to amend Title One General Administration Administrator to establish a city administrator on second and final reading? Move to adopt ordinance.
Well, just, if, let me make one explanation.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
The one that's in your packet actually contains a motion to amend. If you look on section six, under one, four oh six, part three, that's the point where we delegate personnel authority to a committee made up of commissioner, the department head, and the city administrator for all the other departments to make personnel decisions. We had no provision like that for the administration department. So about the middle way of that paragraph, I'm asked to, uh, insert for general administration department decisions, the committee shall be comprised of the personnel commissioner and the city administrator. That way, there's a commissioner involved in that personnel process, just like everybody else's department. So I guess first I would move to amend ten forty-two to insert that sentence where it's indicated in one you have in your packet.
Yeah, so the, the one we're vote, gonna vote on is in the packet. That's the one I've read the latest.
Yes. Question?
So you're, you're making a motion to amend?
Well, we've already passed this on first reading.
Okay.
So it would be to insert that in one sentence where it's shown in that paragraph in the ordinance that's in your pack. And that involves commissioner and personnel decisions for this department, like there's one involved with every other department.
Commissioner, you may correct me if necessary, but I believe the same time was when the two, the words, uh, supervise and were taken out. So that was in, tho- those two words were in what was passed the first time, and that also needs to be part of the amendment to the first reading, if that's what y'all wanna do, which is the consensus at the last meeting. I don't have it in front of me. I think maybe it's on page six, but the pages aren't numbered.
Okay, in my minutes, it says he, uh, Commissioner Richardson moved to approve ordinance ten forty-two on first reading as amended, and they did already take supervise and be removed. So it was passed as amended.
And it's deleted. It is deleted in the one that we got in our packet.
Yes, got you.
It said supervising, and we took that out.
So the amendment that needs to be made now is the line that you're talking about. Do I hear a motion to amend?
We've got the motion. We just need a second.
I'll second. I'll second the motion to add that sentence.
Okay, tell us exactly what we are voting on. Is everybody clear what we're voting on, the, to amend the personnel department right to three? Be the administrator?
There'd still only be two in the administrative department. It would be the personnel commissioner and the city administrator.
I thought you set up about a commissioner being on there, which Sam is.
Well, all the other departments do.
Would be Sam.
Okay. All right. We've got a motion in a second. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Moser?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jinks?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Motion does carry.
I would move now approval of the ordinance. Well, let me ask you another question. We've not discussed, I think we got some, uh, information emailed to us, the financial side of this. What do we want to do about the effective date of this? Because we say upon passage, then we've authorized the hiring administrator, but there's nothing in the budget authorizing paying.
I think that's something we probably need to take to the next workshop.
The ordinance, the, the ordinance ten forty-two just authorizes you all to appoint somebody. It says that the mayor and board of commissioners may appoint, so it's not necessary that they be done at the same time. You may want to, you may not want to.
It's, even, even if we appoint, we can take the financial side over to the next workshop, didn't we?
Yes.
That way we have time to look over things.
I just don't want us to get in trouble with auditors.
Correct.
You know, if we say, yes, start tomorrow, because there's nothing in the budget to pay them for the month of August until we have the workshop.
Yeah.
Then we'll have to amend the budget if we're gonna overprocess it.
Can we do that in the workshop? We can do that in the workshop, the starting date and effective September, October, whenever. When do you wanna start?
Is it, is it appropriate to, based on just basis of discussion and confirmation of amount, is it totally feasible to, um, retroactive? That's not the word.
Yeah. We can retroact. If it takes us three weeks to get our ducks in a row, we can retroactively pay the fact what you would have made.
I'm, I'm not an accountant, but I'm just asking that question.
Well, from, from a bookkeeping standpoint, what do you need as good? If, if you don't see this problem, that's fine.
Um, I think it's, I would like for y'all to be very comfortable with whatever you discuss in this, so I would rather you have the opportunity to discuss it in the workshop in August, and I remain at my same salary until you have a chance to pass it. If you wanna make it retroactive, great, but, you know, I'll survive until the end of August, so I would rather you all feel comfortable with, with looking at the information that's provided, and it also affects two other people in the office, so I wanna make sure that we've, we're all on the same page and know exactly what's happening. So I think if we do it at the August workshop, y'all have a chance to discuss it and adopt the pay scale in general for all three of those positions.
And we're not breaking any accounting regulation?
Um, so I had already budgeted to give raises to the people in the office, so right at this moment, we actually have more in the budget than what we're spending right now, so we're not going to go above that limit in a month. Like it might by the end of the year, but right now we have a little time.
Are the other two already getting a pay raise?
Not yet. I would like for you all to adopt a revised pay scale that, that flat out clearly explains what all three positions will be paid.
If we, if we can do it retroactively and not cause an accounting issue, um, I think we'd be ready to do that by, by the workshop.
I do, too.
So I'll have that on the agenda, and it's a called meeting already, so we'll do it as a called meeting on, on August twenty-sixth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's okay. I just don't want us to step in high gear.
Okay, is there a motion to appoint a city administrator? I'll move to adopt ordinance number ten forty-two as amended, uh, to amend Title One General Administration to establish a city administrator on final reading. All, any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Does it need a roll call?
Roll call.
Commissioner Hughes?
Aye.
Commissioner Moser?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jinks?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Okay, motion does carry.
No, we don't have to announce it. We can just use the motion. We haven't done that one yet, but also.
Is there a motion to appoint a city administrator? I move to appoint Jessica Morgan as our city administrator.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed likewise, motion does carry. In new business, we have appoint, appointments to board. Is there a motion to appoint a person to the Sweetwater Utility Board for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight? Who's up, Terry Knight?
It's Terry Knight.
I would move the reappointment of Terry Knight to that position.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed likewise, motion does carry. We have a nominee from the Library Board of Larry Rogers to serve on the Sweetwater Public Library Board for a term expiring July first, twenty twenty-seven. Do I hear a motion? Move to approve the appointment?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Larry's a good fella. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed likewise, motion does carry. I have reappointed Ricardo Torres and Johnny Siller to the Economic Development Community Board for a term expiring July first, twenty twenty-eight. I have reappointed Jackie Mayotte for the Planning Commission with a term expiring sixth, July, uh, June sixth, twenty thirty-one. Are there nominations for the Park and Rec Commission for three appointees for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six? Are there nominations for the Park and Rec Commission for three appointees for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six?
I'm, no, I'm, uh, Lucille Wyman, Kim Harvey, and Jason Upton.
Second. All in, okay.
Are we doing all three of those at once just then? Or do we need to do them individually?
No objection.
I'm, I'm just asking. Because we, we did Terry Knight individually and we did Larry.
They're one but, they're one but one running for that.
I'm, I'm just asking.
Any objection to, uh, vote on all three at once? Okay, I need them.
Got a motion in a second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise, motion carries. Is there an appointment for the Industrial Development Board for a term expiring July first, twenty thirty?
Did anybody talk to Marty Allen?
No, I didn't. But I'm, I'm sure Marty will take it.
I make a motion.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise, motion does carry. Are there appointments for the Health Education Housing Facility Board for three terms expiring July first, twenty thirty?
Dan Harvey, Kenny Archer, Keith Show.
Okay. Have we ever met? Somebody make a motion to put all three of them back.
This is actually a bond issuing board, so unless, like, the hospital wanted to issue a bond or something, this board would likely not meet. And those are the people that have served on it.
Make a motion to put all three back on.
Second. Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise, motion does carry. Are there nominations for two appointments to the Sweetwater Tree Board for terms expiring July first, twenty twenty-eight? Ms. Crabtree, I talked to her and she said she was coming off of it. She wanted to come off of it, so, uh...
What we'll do is we'll go ahead and make a motion, uh, for Pige Collet and then, uh, once we find a replacement for Mary Chapel, we'll bring that back before the board.
Okay.
But I'll make that in the form of a motion, if I may.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise, motion does carry for Pige. Are the, are there nominations for two terms expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight on Historic Zoning Commission?
Um, John has checked with Ashley and Peggy, both, and they, they are wanting to, to continue to serve. So I'll make a motion for those two.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise, motion does carry. Is there a nomination to appoint a member to the Building Code's Board of Review?
Um, John has touched base with a couple of folks, but we don't have anyone locked down. So we need to, some more, more, more time on, on that one.
We'll bring that one back up. Is there a nomination to appoint two members to the Sweetwater Heritage Mu, Museum Board for terms expiring July first, twenty twenty-seven?
Are the two highlighted the?
Both of them have agreed to serve.
I'll, I'll move to appoint.
I'll second.
Motion's made in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise, motion does carry. Reminder, the Sweetwater Utility Board Joint Meeting will be September twelfth at six o'clock. I assume that'll be over at the...
Utility Board Office, yes.
Okay. And tomorrow night, Eddie, uh, District International Idol, tomorrow night at six to nine at the rec center. I'd like to go ahead and thank all the departments, commissioner, director, and us. Uh, everybody's been working hard on it, looked at a good turnout, it's getting hot. I know they got the pool ready, they're letting the school people off. From where, just like city, to be able to do it, you know, uh, get all the, to get kind of kick off, back to school. I know the street department's cut out, we got a, we got a lot of stuff done on the school safety and stuff like that. And then, I think, tomorrow night, everybody's welcome to come up and, to kick off at six o'clock. Heat's gonna be hot, so if you're waiting to come up later, I totally understand that. All right.
I apologize. Uh, the dog catcher we hired last month lasted two days. Can I hire the new dog catcher tonight? I should have had that on this and I, I forgot to put it on there.
Well, let's have his name.
Can I rehire Christopher Kelso as the new animal control?
Okay. Second. Both named second, hire Christopher, new dog catcher. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both likewise, motion does carry.
Thank you.
Thank you for being... Thank you for being here and we are adjourned.